Hi, this is the, this meeting is, sorry, this is the regular monthly meeting of the Titan Development and Historical Commission. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on our U-Town YouTube channel. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. You can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance into the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
My nation.
Under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. And the first item on the agenda is to discuss review act on any new business interest in town. Mark Pacico had been funneling to me every time he got a new business certificate filed. I haven't gotten those in a while because he's been gone. I haven't caught up with the town, new town clerk yet. She just started. So I'm going to try to get that same arrangement going with her. So as new ones come aboard. And part of that process, at least Mark was doing, was saying, you know, here's the online business directory. Do you want to join? It's free. Getting them to sign up right then and there. So hopefully she'll be amenable to doing that as well, but I'll talk to her and make sure that's a go. Um, but I think Joe, you had come in late last time and so we didn't get a chance to talk about it, but I know like about six weeks ago. Somebody had reached out to the assessors department about wanting to start a roofing company in town. And they had been looking at that piece of property up on Winthrop Street that had gone up for sale. I know. And I referred them to you. Did anything ever come of that?
No.
No, okay.
They never called me on it or.
Okay.
Anything like that.
All right. See, next item, discuss Laura Smith was appointed as a member of the book of selectmen. So congratulations Laura. So officially a member now. Thank you. Discuss review at cable business spotlight. So Paul and Laura Madeiras from the Cable Commission held their first interview and taping on Saturday, July 15th. It was with E-N-L Fitness. So Paul was the host, which is, he's going to do this going forward. It went fantastic. Lasted about seven to 10 minutes. So it's just right within the timeframe we wanted. So no editing, editing is going to be needed. They're just going to put a header and trailer on it to say, you know, introduction to the show and for other questions, contact the DDIC. But it just was really relaxed, flowed really nicely. They taped it here. We actually already have our second request, which is from under the sun. Um, so right now we're just playing email tag with them, trying to figure out a date when Paul and Laura and them are going to be available. And they're going to tape that. And if you haven't already seen it on the town YouTube, there is like a three minute introduction by Paul. Just saying, hi, welcome to DDIC. This is what we're doing. If you'd like your business featured. Now reach out to us. And that's apparently how both of them, you know, found us. Um, originally they had stuck it under a separate channel, like they created, the Cable Commission created like this whole channel called DDIC YouTube.
Really?
Which nobody could find or nobody was looking for either. So I said, just put it under the town channel where everything else is. That's how people are going to find it. So as soon as she did that and started getting, you know, requests, yeah.
Now. Wednesday night. I speak about this. Any business, are you looking for businesses to sign up with any contact?
You can, the DDIC at DDIC at titan-ma.gov. And until I saw Paul staying posted, I've been holding off and sending out like kind of email blasts. But I'm probably going to send that out tonight to at least all the businesses that we have emails for. And then I'll also stick it on social media. You know, for those that, you know, can find it that way, but you're putting it on, you know, mentioning it at the selectance meeting would be great too.
I wonder if one connection would work.
They might, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, they, I know I have their email, so they'll definitely get on the email.
Um, so they could use a.
Let's see. So we kind of decided based upon everybody's schedule that they're going to try to do one of these once every two weeks.
Right.
That gives time for, really it's just Saturday mornings is really when Paul and Laura is available. And then you have to do some editing. I had volunteered to learn editing so I could help them, but Dalton, who's, he's a dispatcher with the police department, but he works with cable. So he's come back and he's helping them. So he's going to take care of all that. And he said, if we just do it like once every two weeks, that's fine with him. He can definitely keep up with that. So.
Good job.
So I did actually send out, I think I mentioned it here, a sample email that I wanted to, the one I wanted to send out to everybody. I sent it in the minutes, I sent you the minutes yesterday. Um, if anybody had a chance to look at that, if not, I can just kind of go over it. But I just wanted to keep it like really short, but at the same time grab people's attention. So tell me to read it or are people okay with it or?
I've read it.
You read it?
Yeah.
Okay, Sean, I know you're okay. Good. Read it?
Yes.
Sure. Let me just call it up here.
I have it here printed.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Did you see it? Yeah, you saw it. Okay.
Dan, I thought you did a great job on that.
Oh, thanks.
Yep.
That's what makes us look really busy. I didn't realize, you know, like here's going, here's what's going on. Call the DDIC. Here's what's going on. Call the DDIC. Here's what's going on. Call the DDIC.
Now you are sending that to all the people that we have on our Dayton registered business list that have, we have their email address.
Yes, I have about 150 emails. There's roughly another 130, 140 businesses that I do not have emails for. I just have street addresses. Um, so you know, those people hopefully see us on social media or when Lenny mentions it or catch us on YouTube.
Quick question, is there a spot in town hall where um notices go up? And is there anything that we can do maybe to, you know, advertise some of the work that we're doing at town hall? Yes, DDIC has a spot on the bulletin board in the lobby.
Okay.
Out in the, the best of you. Okay. Where all the meetings are posted. Great. And it says DDIC right at the top. Beautiful. Thank you.
But this is jumping ahead a little bit, but since you mentioned that, um, for the networking event, we talked about doing like a big phone back. And I did talk to the selectman's office and they said for that, they have a stand and we can sit that right up in the lobby as you walk in. So that'll be front and center. But for everything else, yeah, I can stick it on the poster board that Lenny just mentioned.
Great.
For the, so the Dayton Firecracker Festival. What information else could, is there like a link that could be also posted so that people can know what this is about?
Yeah, it's done by Parks and Rec. So I can find a link, probably Parks and Rec must have us posted someplace. I can include that link.
And how are these business cards going to be displayed? Are they going to blow away if it's windy or?
I'm building a, like just a big shelving with, you know, little verticals. So not a whole individual cards. Hopefully we can fit like 50 or 60 sets of them up there. So. And hopefully, and if they get back to us, I'll just run around town and grab them. If somebody says, you know, I've got 10 or so, 20, whatever. I'll just slip out to the business, grab them and I'll have them for that day.
Is there a way that like they can print out like maybe an eight by 11 thing that says what their business is? And then, then like a space to hold the business card?
The tent is like 10 by 10 of the table. So depending about how many we get, um, I could have those. I might want to have to keep them with the paper, like a piece of paper. I might have to keep them in a folder someplace, but I can offer to hand them out to people if they grab a card. I can say, here's something else. I don't know that we can have room to display that.
I'm just thinking of something quick for people to.
Yeah.
glance. Like, oh, I, I need a florist. So let me take this card.
Yeah, I have room for the cards. I just don't think in a little tent, we're going to have room for, you know, multiple, you know, piece of paper like this, but for display. Unless somebody can think of a way to do it.
I know businesses usually do like trifolds, Dan, right? You know how they, you take like an eight and a half by 11 and do the trifold. So it's only about that big, you know? I don't know how many local businesses would have something like that, but maybe that would work.
You know what I'll do is I'll just take what they offer. Their business cards, with their business cards, if they have trifolds or just pieces of paper, then I'll take that and we'll just display as much as we can. So.
Um, also Laura, um, I saw that on Parks and Rec, there was a posting about hold the date, but there was no details. It was just, you know, it's going to happen September 9th, 12 to 5. Um, but there were absolutely no details. So I think they are still working on all of the details for the firecracker event. Kevin is very, very busy right now. Got three events in September. Okay.
I was thinking that it maybe did a a board with shelves that the, the eight by 11 could be placed in the carton on each side of it. Or in the front of it. Uh, so in other words, if they say 10 businesses, you have a board, backboard with little displays that are kind of angled and they all step up two, three inches above one and up. We just, I see this is this in offices that, you know, mail rooms type of things. They put these cards and visible at all time. I don't know if that.
So if we're going to build it, you've already exceeded my carpentry skills. Is there something at town hall like spare furniture that's kind of like that that we can borrow? Like what Joe was just describing, it's just like a rack that you use to display papers and such. And it's like filing with, you know, just like a metal strip across it or something that's.
This can actually purchase that, uh, you know, places that sell paperwork and stuff.
Those are a bit, I'm guessing they're a little pricey.
Like, I honestly don't know, but.
I would get office furniture can get pricey. That's the only reason.
I'll take a ride down to what's that place that's the, does copying and stuff uh, over at Rainham.
Oh, Rainham. Oh, right.
I'm sorry, Staples. There you go. That's where you get paid the big.
They would.
They would have something like that. And I'll look to see what the prices are on. And you know, depending on how many businesses we have, but I do agree that if we could have uh, something like that, that people can take a business card and.
In that.
One of these, I think that would, would be nice. That's.
Joe, remember that we get a discount at Staples.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
As a member of the chamber.
Yeah, the town is a member, um, a member of the chamber. Staples is a member of chamber and they offer, I think a 10% discount.
Okay. That's good. Every little bit counts.
Okay.
One last comment, the Dayton Online Business Directory. Is there a form for people to fill out?
Um, it can just be down to an email. Um, the town clerk, if they are getting their town certificate, that he canceled for him and says, if you want to do it. Because Mark was very adamant about, um, he would only do it if they intentionally opted in. He wasn't just going to send me stuff and say, you know, here's some new businesses. Go please add them. And, you know, we didn't want to add them either unless they opted in. So um, it's just getting the information from them, whether that be in an email or at the town clerk form. Um, but, um, and you should be on there. I think you are.
I'm not.
You're not, so.
I remember the email that came out where I'm like, okay, that's another thing I gotta do, but they kind of like got it.
That's fine.
Down on the list of things to do.
So busy. For the online forum, I'm sorry, for the online business directory. And for the cable spotlight, we did decide that we're restricting it to legally recognized businesses, if you will. So you're either have a business certificate with the town or you have a corporation filed with the state, one of those two. It's not like I sell stuff out of my back door, but I'm a business. It's like, well, do you have a business certificate? Are you a corporation? And what are you? Um, for the chamber event, correct me if I'm wrong, um, John. And for the firecracker festival, it's just anybody, you know, you're a business, you want to be a business, great, you're a business, you know, we'll display your cards. We will invite you to the chamber event. And hopefully you'll become successful enough that you'll get to the point where you are incorporated or you do go for the business certificate or something. So. But the other two, we just decided intentionally to limit so that it's, you know, kind of not like my teenage son cuts grass. He's a business, you know, can you list them on the town website? So.
I, just as a business owner, I just think it would be easier if there was some type of form, like the name of the business, the owner, the address, what we do, kind of like what you already have.
Okay.
On there. Just if I clicked that and I could fill it in.
Okay.
Submit. I don't know if you do Google for the town or what.
We do not. Yeah. So it's all email based. So those questions in an email, just say, please reply with the answers, but I can attach a form that people can edit and send back to. So.
And that might be easy for the, or the cable business spotlight or so you can get a little background information.
The next item is just a reminder that we still have an open DDIC position. I know Paul had somebody spoken to and um, and John had somebody he thought might be interested, but just, just a reminder, it's still out there. It's, we have an opening.
What I would like to see this board do this evening is, and we'll do it Wednesdays to formally post it.
Should be.
Right.
Okay.
When will be your deadline when you're going to do the interviews?
Um, well, we haven't had any candidates yet.
What's that?
We haven't, we don't have any candidates. John, Paul and John are trying to recruit people, but we have no official candidates. Yeah. But I think it was mentioned when you guys were doing all the reappointments, that it would be posted for, you know, whatever time period that gets posted two weeks out or something. So.
Do you have a closing date? Okay.
Because we don't have anybody to interview.
What do you, what do you mean by a closing day? And I'm sorry.
Well, deadline.
A deadline. So that once you get your applicants in, you just set a date to interview. I, you know, because then it has to be interviewed here and then they've got to come before the board to select.
I just say, people are interested, they can contact us and we'll go forward.
Okay.
We get one, great. We get five, fantastic. But
And it's a member at large.
Member at large, yeah.
I'll return it tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, Wednesday night.
I mean, would it be a good thing for board of selectmen to say, we are seeking new members for?
Oh, that's what I'm going to do. Oh, yeah. Well, definitely. You know, and also.
You can say the same thing.
The good things this organization is doing.
We hope so.
You've certainly gotten word out that business directory has got a lot of positive comments. The big thing that I see, the DDIC, if they can have any influence is with open space. Because we appear to have, it appears to be two obstacles for business that's coming into this town, the tax rate. But the availability of business space, commercials and industrial especially. So it's something strategically we've got to take a look at.
I am, businesses is very, very hard to, there's a lot of business that we could bring into the, to town, but where do we put them?
Right.
That's, that's the biggest problem. I mean, there is nothing that I know of that's available to the business to, to start.
Okay, and on the open space and working with Serpent. Has there been any talk about rezoning certain areas or working with the planning board to rezone certain areas?
Well, not from Serpent, because Serpent is just coming up with best practices. Just informational stuff to give to towns of, you know, best practices for, in particular, um, conservation subdivisions. No. Um, and I did happen to meet with the Serpent rep a couple of weeks ago to, she's going to send me a copy of what they're working on. And she happens to be a Titan resident and may be interested in joining open space.
Good.
So that actually gives us a quorum for open space and she's probably the most knowledgeable person you might want on such a committee. So, so, yeah. Um, but yeah, she, I mean, that's what they're working on right now and they're going to come back and present it to the planning board, you know, whatever group is involved. So.
I mean, this body can go out, recruit businesses, but if they had no place to go. It's why some changes, zoning changes, firstly, those commercial industrial areas that are landmark residential.
So that's, that is a separate thing that Mike started, um, back in March. He submitted a one stop grant to get a consultant to come in and help primarily the planning board, but to just come like to a complete once over of all the zoning, look at it, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, since most of it hasn't changed in 50 years or so. And, um, you know, and make recommendations. So I think those grants get awarded sometime around fall. So, um, so hopefully Mike will hear from that and we'll get, you know, somebody on board to, to help do that study.
This?
Yeah.
This is a big.
A very expensive process to do this study.
Yeah.
We did it, my beginning of appointing board as a planning board member, that was being done at that time. And it was a substantial cost.
Oh, really?
Yes. In fact, a lot of things were done after that. A lot of changes were made, but nothing ever came. Very little change was done, you know, don't say some things changed, but not really uh, effective.
But, but why? So you didn't have the DDIC back then either?
He, not at that time. It came in just a few years after, but the only big change that happened was 138 was changed to mixed use. Uh, we had the oval overlay over here on this intersection. There was a couple of other properties in the areas that were made commercial and stuff. But it wasn't enough. It wasn't enough to bring any business in. So, so.
Where were we at with CVS?
CVS? What, they're showing any interest?
I've heard some talk.
I've got the primary property here. So I need to know those things.
Center Street.
Mm-hmm. I've heard that they had no interest in it because the population is not enough to entertain that. That was, that's been that way for a few years. CVS and all of those other chains.
Now the land behind we have, uh, across the street from your building, land in the back, is that the Aggies land?
The, the across from where? You mean where the cemetery is?
Yeah.
That first of all, is not part of the overlay. She refused to go on now. And, uh, behind the cemetery, there's a limited space there.
Okay.
Uh, oh, that's, that's as just as good of a corner as mine. There's no, I'm not going to stand, sit here and say no, but it's not that at the time, if I remember correctly, I've been wrong before once. And, uh, at the time she refused to join the overlay. She didn't want anything to do with anything like that.
Now, how, how do you have a right to join it or not?
You are asked and you can say yes or no.
Oh, so what is the property zone is then?
I honestly think it's disqualifying. I'll look that up.
No, would they have to formally, can they at any time ask to join or?
I.
Is there a opening close?
No, because it has to go before the town.
Oh.
Okay. So it's, it's the same thing as rezoning an area uh, a part of the town.
It's not exclusively to the planning board.
It is, but the town people have to approve it.
Okay.
That's, 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 that was, that's the way I view it from my end.
But John, does you want to say something? John?
Yeah, just have a question. I know, you know, maybe about six months ago was the last time we had heard from Serpent on this economic development plan that they were working on for the town, um, which was including some, I thought, some recommendations for rezoning. Um, but I haven't heard from, or, or the, you know, we as a commission haven't heard from uh, that woman for a while. I don't know, Dan, have you been working with her?
Um, I did reach out to Lizeth recently in that one stop grant that I mentioned that we applied for, that is actually through Serpent.
Okay.
So that is part of it. Um, they were going to help us, you know, look at the zoning and blah, blah, blah. And then when she and Mike and I spoke, Mike started bringing up other things like, you know, down the road, we make it caught up in what's going on with South Coast Rail and, you know, back to heavy packs for zoning and let's just do this once and try to capture everything that we know is going on as opposed to doing a piecemeal. And so that was when Lizeth said, well, why don't you go for the one stop grant, get a, somebody in here full time, you know, or on whatever, six months, a year, however long it takes and, um, have them just go through, you know, taking all these things into consideration. So that's actually where that stands.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's probably a good thing, right? Is to try to look at the bigger picture.
Right.
If we're going to, yeah, put the effort into it. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
I think we should bring that up at the planning board, next planning board meeting. We should bring this up to see what we have to do because I think we are the ones that will make the changes and.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, see, maybe put it out for bids for different companies to come in and.
Yeah, I don't know how it's going to work because it's, well, at least what Mike applied for is a grant. And then I don't know if Serpent is the supplier or whether they give us a chunk of money and say, now go put it out bid.
I think they helped. I think they helped the last time.
They did.
But it was not.
Okay. So we haven't gotten the money yet or the town hasn't, but I'll ask Mike and if he can, um.
Should we, should we not get an actual cost and then see if we can get the money or should we?
We can talk to, see which way Mike's, Mike's trying to get the money first and then have it.
Is it?
But it's enough, should be enough to pay for a consultant, but I don't know what the dollar amount is. Um, but we can just ask him and then.
Okay.
And maybe the planning board, just like, you know, we'd rather hire somebody and that's, which is a choice. Yeah.
I, I remember at the time, uh, it, it being very expensive. None of us expected that much money. Just they did a very good job. They made a lot of different presentations, different companies that came in, came before us and made a presentation. This is what we propose, but we don't propose. And then one company came in, we all felt comfortable with them. They did a pretty nice job. And, and, and that was also because we, in order to qualify for a grant. And again, I, my memory is getting old. In order to qualify for a grant. We had to. We, we had to do it in order to qualify for a grant, but I'm not really sure. What the grant was for, to be honest with you.
I think what I'll do is, I'll say something to Carrie, I said, Carrie, can you go talk to Mike and see where this stands? And what, if anything, planning board should be doing in advance, or is this? What do you know that's going on, because Mike started it and I assume he looped in Carrie, but. And then Carrie can just let us know what's going on and what's supposed to be next and.
Okay. It's, I, I, I'm, I'm not really. Knowledge enough on it to actually say tomorrow. It is what it is.
The next item I have was discuss, Discuss Review Act on any advertising and sponsorship. For the second annual business networking then October third. So as I mentioned, I did talk to. Selectmen's office, they said, fine, we can put up a big poster in the town hall on an easel. And um. Chris Silva from the Chamber of Commerce sent me the graphics. For what it's gonna look like, it's very similar to last year's. Um, but she, so I can go have that done at Staples. We'd already approved at our last meeting. Like up to thirty dollars to spend at Staples to have that done. Let's see, and you already connected me with the contact at Staples, so we're good to go there to get the discount. It was also suggested you weren't here, we suggested that we put up a big sign right on your property advertising.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to talk to you about. I was going to put it up, it'll be for four weeks from September third to October third. If you could, you know the size of the sign, it's been there. For the last three years.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean that electric sign, is that?
Well, the same one that I use that. Oh, I can't.
That's fine.
So what do we need to?
Well, what this board should do is come up with the wording you'd like, yeah. Tell the guy to put on the sign.
Is there a certain, like, there's a space, so how many, how many characters that we're limited to or?
No, but.
No.
You know, you don't wanna make it too wordy because then it's mumble jumble, no, people can't really read it.
Okay.
I tried to buy that each letter, so.
So. Why don't we just do that now, I mean, what do we?
You know, day, time.
Something like, save the date. Business type, I mean, what do you want, like, save the date?
I wouldn't even like, you don't have to say save the date, just put the date, you know. Dayton Business Expo Bristol Aggie. Yeah, date and time.
I think John specializes in those.
You.
I would say, no, it's a networking event, right, I mean, so um, and not only that, but there are gonna be. As you know, SCORE will be there. Um, um, CED will be there, you know, another, a number of Dayton business res- uh, re-. Business resources that Dayton businesses can take advantage of, and. I'm not sure how many of you Dayton businesses know these. You know, capabilities exist, right, so. That was the big takeaway, I think, from last year's networking event was that. A lot of the attendees said, oh, I didn't know what SCORE did, I didn't know what CED did, I didn't know. What the Mass Development Corporation does, right, so the, all of those. Organizations will be represented there, so. I don't know, do you say it's a networking and information sharing event, something like that?
What is the chamber calling it technically?
Calling it a network, business networking, I'll, I'll. Yeah, I'll get you. I'll, I'll let you know, I'll tell you in a second.
Extravaganza? That might be too many letters for the sign though.
So, so if the sign is there, what does somebody do, like, how do they know?
That will.
Register and?
Oh, you'd have to have something on there.
Is there a? I mean, they have to go to the top.
I'll take it via email if they wanna send it to the DDIC email, but they can also go to the chamber. I don't think the chamber has the site up yet to register.
Yeah, they do.
Oh, they do already?
I think, we can put at the bottom of the um. Web address. You know, in WWW dot.
T A C C dot org or whatever it is.
Right.
So on that sign, there should be, please sign up. On.
Well, if you.
Online.
If you put the web, well, it gets too.
I don't know.
If you just put the.
You just put the website.
Website, yeah.
Not a.
That's what we did for Dawn.
Okay. So just. Business networking. Event with the chamber's website, just, and the dates.
Oh, yeah, and the location.
Well. I don't wanna give them a location, people just gonna start showing up, that, that, that's horrible, but they need to register so they have headcount, so.
Okay.
Does that sound appropriate? Do you wanna think about it, John, maybe you're gonna talk to Chris, like, tell her we're gonna put this sign up, what's? You know, and it's very short, like, one or two cent, you know, it's a couple of words, like, what's the best thing to just stick out there and?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll do that, yeah, we'll do.
And it's not right, so.
Just remember, the more letters you put down, the better, well, I'll be.
Well, again, and, and, you know, I think, Joe, the other thing will be, will, the response will be the checks in the mail.
That works too.
So this is more for Paul, I know he's not here, but he had mentioned going around and trying to get sponsors. So Chris said that they technically have room around that big venue at the. Chamber for thirteen tables and they've already got twelve of them.
Oh, wow.
So um. They do have one more space and they can even ask people to kind of double up a little bit if we want to. But it would be for people who are five hundred dollar plus sponsors. So. They have a little bit of room left if you, if we, anybody knows, anybody wants to sponsor it, but that's kind of where they are right now, they.
How about Baycoast, did anyone reach out?
Baycoast is definitely a sponsor already, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Mechanics.
I don't know, do you know who the sponsors are at this point, John?
I don't know yet, um, but um, you know, both of those busi- both of those banks were represented last year. Um, and the feedback we got on last year's, you know, event was great, right, so. Um, I think most people will sign up again for this, you know, for this year.
And both of those banks. Have people high up in the corporate chain that live in Dayton, that are Dayton residents. Mechanics, it's got your Baptiste. I'm not sure the woman's name, Baycoast is the vice president. They're Dayton residents.
Baycoast does not?
I don't.
Baycoast doesn't. Anybody that lives in town?
Well, yeah, the vice president.
Oh.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda was Discuss Review Act on the status of Mendoza Farm on Elm Street. I just reached out to Laura, because I know that it's a thirteen acre farm. It's been for sale now. On like Zillow and other sites for about six months. Um, there is an old building in there, it's built, the, the house is not probably in very good shape, but. I didn't know, um, Laura, do you wanna just like, let us know what's going on, and I just wanted to talk about. If. If anything. Is there anything that the DDIC could help, or the town more properly could help with, trying to. Get it, you know, back into a working farm, help find tenants or sale or?
Where is this?
Mendoza is on.
Elm Street.
Elm Street.
Oh.
Just sold?
Under agreement.
Oh.
To a farm?
Uh, I think it is, they're just gonna build one house on there, one personal family house. Instead of a duplex. And. They are gonna do something with the land, what they're going to do, I don't know what it is, but I think it's going to be a buy.
Okay, it is. Probably under, you know, chapter sixty one now, so if they do something else, have to come out of that, but.
Well, that's.
Oh, that's great.
But one thing that we gotta remember, it is zoned industrial.
It is.
It is.
Interesting, I didn't realize that.
Wow.
And so are all the houses over towards Lincoln Ave.
Right.
Including that cemetery that's there, that's all zoned industrial.
Right.
How did that ever happen that now we can't build a house on there?
Cemetery, I mean. What are they thinking?
I was actually gonna purchase that, I, I put a bid in it, but I was low, and I knew I was low.
Wait a minute, are you talking about the house?
On Elm Street.
And, and the land behind it?
Yes.
This, that's not Mendoza, Mendoza's on Elm.
Yeah, that's what I thought you said, Elm.
Yeah.
That's not Elm Street.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're talking about off of Old Somerset.
Old Somerset.
That's what you're thinking, right? In North Dayton.
Oh, okay, you know, this is, I, I do.
Yeah.
With that, totally, but I apologize, my mistake.
So, I know you said you had been out there, Laura, you and your husband and.
Well, I had seen, C map had put something out that it was available, um. And my, my husband and I were just looked at all the pictures of what it is, but. Have you, have you talked with the ad commission about this, because this is really. They should be.
Um, no, and I don't actually know how active. They.
More active.
To become more active, okay. I've, at different times sent emails to them on.
Oh, talk to people.
Yeah, all right. So whether it's us or the agricultural commission. What are the, if any, what are the kinds of things the towns could do to help? Like, if they're struggling to find buyers or. Um, or just there are obstacles in the way, do you have suggestions for? The, to the town just like, stay out of the way and that's the best thing they can do, no, honestly?
Uh, I, I don't know what sound can do, it's, I mean, it's a farm.
Right.
And so it's, it's very difficult for a farmer to buy something that's seven hundred thousand dollars. We don't make that kind of money. Um. So that's, that's, that's the hard part for a farmer to purchase it, so I'm, I'm guessing that the. Ad commission would reach out to El farmers in the community to let them know that this is available. Um, I know C map put it out there that. It's available, um, there are other organizations. That. Work to find. Um, farmers, let farmers know that there are locations available to purchase. It's just the amount of money that it is and the fact that it, it's not ready to farm.
Oh, it's not in a condition right now?
Right, you, they, they need a lot more money to.
Pump into it just to get it up and running.
So if the town of Dayton wants to put out any grants to young farmers.
It sounds like they're trying to attract, attract developers.
I've been told that there are grants out there for farms.
There are. It's just. You know, you gotta fill out, you know, forms that this, this high, you need to have a W two to make sure that. You know, USDA does, can help, it's just. A lot.
To put out.
To put to.
Yeah.
To do all that.
Yeah, I need a college degree to, I mean, uh, a few college degrees to actually know how to fill out all the.
I, I mean, the FSA will help, um. Farm Service Agency. They'll help you do all that, but you need to have the proof that you can pay the money. To get the loan.
So, this is going back a little over a year, I went to a, um. It was sponsored by C map, it was an event up at Aggie. For new farmers. I'm not suggesting that Dayton go down this road, I'm just putting it out there because, you know. Financially, I don't think Titan has the resources to do this, but just for information purposes. There are towns that have worked with farmers to. Whether it's in trust or, um. Am I correct that there are things that towns have done to make things affordable for farmers to try to attract them?
I'm not sure about that, I do know something that the town of Seconk. Helped me with, I have land that's in APR. Doing what, at agricultural preservation restriction. So, um. I worked with. US, no. It was Massachusetts, I worked with Massachusetts, um, M D R, Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. Um, they put up some money. And the town of Seconk put up some money, but like their. I forget what it's called. Maybe that land trust or something like that. Um. And paid. Was my parents. Um. Some money. To, so that I can't do anything with that land but farm. Um, cause I could put in ten houses. But. The state and the town, it was important enough that I don't do that. But then that, that also costs my parents lots of money. To do, because we had to have it surveyed, we had to have lawyers and. It took two years to do, and I had this mint paperwork that I had to fill out. I don't know if that answered your question.
It does, yeah, no, I, I think that's what I was thinking, like land trusts, but. Obviously, that involves the town having possession. However, it comes by that position, it buys it. And takes it by whatever, you know, the means, you know, it comes to its, its property. And then it does decides to do something with it, like. Lease it back out or sell it at a reduced rate with that kind of agreement so that it can never ever be anything but farming. Um. But, you know, I'm not suggesting to anyone listening that Dayton's in a financial position to go down that road and, but. These are things that other towns have done to help attract, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, yes. The town of Dayton wants to purchase it and then lease it.
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
I'm wondering. I don't know. Total restrictions on CPC. If they could give some help.
I don't think this would fall into CPC, it doesn't, it's not historical, it's not open, open space recreation, so. Yeah, if, if it was just like, buy it and let it sit there as open space. That's one thing, but that's not the intended purpose, I mean, it's kind of open space, I think. I, I think it might be a gray area, but. Off the top of my head, I don't think it falls under, you know, really what CPC is for, so.
Yeah, something just came to me, that we used to rent property. In East Providence, it was, I, I think it was a land trust and they. I don't even know if they charged us, I don't think they charged us, because they wanted to open space. And they want, had like the perimeter, where they wanted to make sure they could walk their dogs and stuff like that, and we farmed the center of it.
That's something for open space to actually think about.
Right, yeah, just like.
Where they could purchase it.
Still seven hundred thousand dollars to purchase it.
Only money. Uh, yeah, but the.
Let me just have to approve it, what do you?
No, no. Townspeople.
I have a friend that owns, he's the second largest. Landowner in Rehoboth. And when he purchased these two parcels, he went to. The town of Rehoboth and the town of Swansea to say, listen, I'm willing to sell. My rights to build on this. And all I need from you guys is X amount of dollars. Swan, uh, Swansea, I see, Con, Swansea, I think it is. Was ready to do it. Rehoboth, no, we don't have that kind of money. So, still remains that way. But uh. They stand a lot to lose for that, because if houses go into that. It's a totally, the houses are all nothing but. You know, a problem for any city or town. Uh, because no matter what, we're gonna be always educating the kids that are in there and so on, so, so it's worth it. To actually do that. And the Mando- uh, the Mendoza property there. I'm not sure that that will ever happen. Because of conservation. There's a lot of wetlands that exist.
Well, it's an active, was an active farm, so conservation, it should be farmable, so it shouldn't.
Yes, for a farm, but for houses. I don't think that's gonna happen, so that price may actually be dropped. For that truck.
It, just whether it's for this or down the road for another piece, that's a farmland, just. Something to think about, and whether it's us or the agricultural commission, you know, whoever, but just think about, you know. How, if possible, the town can really. Keep them up and running and track farmers and.
If you are interested in them.
I, yeah, because it's right near my property, so. I, yeah, because it's right near my property, so sure, I'd be very convenient, but I don't have that kind of money.
Always make more.
Can't work anymore than you do.
Um, and that's the item was discussed with you act on drone videography. So Joy Brooks, the videographer, um, that we hired has been to several sites now. Um, I don't think she's been to Paul's aunt who owns a horse farm, but they've been in touch. So she's going out there and the town campus, sites around town, Osprey Landing, Aggie. Um, she has been to Paul Shaw's boatyard, which I have been trying to get them to sign the waiver. And I'd spoken to him and he's like, oh, yes, and then I can't get him to actually physically sign it and send it back to him. But she went out there and he was like, oh, yeah, I'm I'm fine with it. So she's done all the videography. But until we get that slip, we can't use it.
As it, as the transaction taking place for the sale.
For Shaw's boatyard?
Right.
Yeah, that was done a couple, a month or two months ago with the owner. Um, so technically we have the footage from throughout Boatyard, but we, I just, we're never gonna be able to use that footage until I can get the sign to physically sign the piece of paper, but that'll happen at some point, I'm sure. Um, and I'm still trying to get Koby Evans, um, from the Mill and Spring seat to to get back to me to sign it. But and I'm not sure, and she's been to a Rouge's. Um, and I'm not sure who it was. It probably was Shaw's. It might have been a Rouge's, but she got a request from the property owner if they could get a copy of the footage. So she reached out to me and said, like, I didn't know what to tell them because you hired me to do this. So, um, so you tell me what you want to do. You, it's yours and only yours, and they want to hire me to do it again, that's fine. It's yours and you willingly want to share it with them and say, yeah, you can use it too. I mean, we we kind of do it down the, down the road. Um, we did this so that down the road, whether it's a year, two years from now, we have raw footage that we can incorporate into a marketing campaign to try to track businesses. Um, so that would be an option. Or we could tell them, yeah, pay us back the seventy five dollars and you can use it, which sounds a little like we're neglecting dining them, but it's, it's only seventy five bucks, but that's what she charges us. Um, but I just thought I'd bring it here and say what what we'd like to do with that kind of request. Somebody's asking if they can get a copy of it and probably use it, you know, for their own advertising.
Should we sell them?
I think we should have said, sure, we don't care. I mean,
Are you gonna charge them?
I wouldn't personally. I would just say let them use it.
So where's it gonna get posted?
Well, they just want to use it. Either they want to have it for their own use, advertising.
Where's Dayton gonna post it?
Um, we actually haven't, just like I said, we're just getting raw footage. So at some point, we wanted to actually hit do outbound marketing, like come bring your business to Dayton with footage and trifold and advertising and but that's a couple of years in the making for us to get that done. So right now, it's just raw footage that we're gonna have in our pocket that we can make use of. And it was a student that just starting her own business, so she gave us a great deal and so that's why we decided to have this done. Um, but in terms of letting other people use it, meaning the business owners, property owners, and then what would we like to do and say to them or?
I mean, what wouldn't it be?
Cost those money to make it.
But we are being generous enough to offer their time and their business to be a part of this.
Yeah, I mean, they're they're doing business.
Okay.
Um, they're letting us film their property. Um, it's only seventy five dollars.
Okay.
It's not like, you know, but we're not gonna, town's gonna go bankrupt.
I think it's a good selling point to get more.
I guess, yeah, I do too. John's question.
Oh, what if we, what if we say something like?
Yeah.
I mean, this is costing us, you know, quite a bit of money. If you're willing to donate something, all the better. So you put it on them, make them feel that, that they're getting something for nothing. That's what I do.
John, yeah.
I I I think, you know, if they're letting us, I agree with Laura, right? They're letting us use their resources, their property there. We're asking them to take time out of their day to, you know, schedule that and that sort of thing, right? Time is money, um, you know, from a business perspective, right? So, um, you know, I am totally fine with, you know, us just letting them use that video. I'm I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I I'll go with it.
Yeah, go for that, okay. So, okay, so I'll let Laura know. I I don't know which, she didn't tell me exactly what business it was, but I'll just let her know that, you know, we'll we'll let them use it too. Um, and the only other item on that I wanted to bring up, that's just FYI, um, two months ago, we had talked, Nancy Goulart was here, we had spoken with the assessors office about having them come in for a future information session to clear up questions we've been getting about um, how the assessors department works in terms of businesses, particularly um, ones that run operate out of homes, what are the paperwork, if any, where they're supposed to be filing each year, they would know um, what's taxable, what's not taxable. Um, so they met again this week or last week, but it was just uh, two members of the assessors, a very quick meeting. Um, so I don't think they've gotten around to this yet, so I'll kind of bring it up with them and just check in and say, you know, hey, we'd still like to do this and, um, probably maybe in the fall, we can have them come in and our idea was just turn one of our regular meetings into an info session, but invite people in and say, you know, this is an opportunity to ask questions of assessors for your business. So
It would, it would be nice to invite the people to come in. I'm not sure that anybody even show up, but I think it would be.
If you have it after the October third thing, event, you could promote that.
Yeah, that's true, very true. Yeah.
Exactly. And Dan, you may want to add just a small blurb about that in the email that you were planning on sending out, right? So you had three topics on that email. Maybe just a small blurb to say, hey, listen, coming, you know, in, you know, later this year, um, there'll be an open meeting for Dayton businesses to learn more from the assessors.
Okay, I can just throw that. I don't want to be too specific because the assessors haven't given me any specifics, so. I'll just do something.
I know we've gotten a lot of questions about personal property taxes.
Right.
What's included.
Yes.
You know, we had one the other night, we're talking about the battery storage going in off of chestnut speed.
And what then?
Is there, you know, solar panels is personal property tax? Is there a personal property tax for the batteries?
Well, the answer is yes, but yeah.
That's gonna be a big, big thing. And we have the planning board, we have a discussion the other day and I I think it's gonna be a a problem. You know, everything, every time I think about that, when we reduce that much land for that, I I'm not sure that people are gonna come in, but whatever it works, we have to be prepared to make sure we do everything for the people that that own property around us, make sure that they're safe, that's the
Thank you, talking about solar. You have a solar and jet. He was talking about specifically battery.
Yeah, well, it's a
It's all the same.
All all kind of
Specifics.
Same way.
Yeah.
But the batteries are are even worse than That's
Um, did anybody, uh, did you have something you would like to bring up?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I am on the South Coast Food Policy Council Community Advisory Board. And we have a challenge coming up this um in August. To eat local. So we're trying to educate um, the South Coast community about um the importance of eating local and how it helps, it makes, you know, you're healthier. It helps with climate change and all that, so it's, this is the information you can register. Um, online, I can, I can forward that um to all of you.
Sure.
How to register and it's, you'll get an um, an email each week, just letting you know how you can what you can do to eat local, whether it's, you know, if you you have a garden, you can post a picture on social media about the garden that you're in. If you go to a farmer's market, if you go to Under the Sun.
Far.
Um, um, going to a restaurant that supports local, um, if you're composting, that's something else that's important.
Um, as part of this, I believe that some local supermarket chains, like major chains, do tie local. So is that information about who they are and what what it types of things they they source that are local, so kind of cook? And is it just, um, like agriculture or is it also like livestock or?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That too, all of it.
Yes, I've been already taking pictures, like I have, I have two fort farms, uh, beef in my crock pot right now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's, and it, there, each weekly email will send you some links on like, um, documentaries that you can watch or podcasts, you can listen to articles that you could read, just it's all about educating consumers about uh, the importance of going local.
Um, on the, you're you're on the board of directors of C map also, is that right? Yeah. Is there anything else just in general? I know C map is constantly have events, talks, seminars.
Yes.
Anything in particular that you just, that's up and coming that you might just want to share or?
Uh, without my notes, I don't know.
No, okay, that's fair enough. Guys.
By the time I can, I can share.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Um, i- if you could email that information to me, I can forward that on to Chris at the chamber. And maybe she can include that if you'd like in one of our, either on our Facebook page or Instagram feeds or um, you know, our weekly newsletter. Um, if you'd like us to do that, I can check on that.
Thank you, that'd be awesome.
Okay, send me the info.
Thank you.
Um, the next item is correspondence. I have none. Um, no public, public input. Approval of the minutes, um, I did, it was very late and apologized, it was yesterday, I sent out the meeting minutes for June twenty sixth, they're very short because we had no video last time. So I just had brief notes, but um, anybody that like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty sixth?
I'll approve.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Guys. Um, set the next meeting date. If we stick with the fourth Monday of the month at six P M, that would put us to um, August twenty eighth, that Monday. Somebody like to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
A second. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, before we adjourn, is there anything else that someone would like to bring up or? Look now. Um, entertain a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? I have us adjourning at uh, seven oh three. All right, good night, John. Thanks for joining. Good night, Cable.
Good seeing you, John. Thank you very much for allowing me to zoom in.
Thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
Good night.